Well, trustees, we're so pleased to present our annual audit. And before our presenters and Ms. Minnick join us, and Ms. Minnick, if you'll introduce our auditors, please. Before they join us, I just want to share an introduction. Trustees, the story of our audit is a remarkable story this year. It represents a narrative about fiscal responsibility that quite frankly, when I arrived in Ann Arbor in the fall of 2013, we were just such a long way from where we are today. So I just want to review for a second that you will see in this audit, and we'll look back at a time where we reached the lowest point we've ever been at in recorded history in terms of our percent of fund equity. And that was over 2012-13 and over 13-14, when our fund equity dipped under 5%. As you know, trustees, and our community may not recall this, but 5% is an important number because when we dip below that number, we trigger an early warning system and really get into a position where communities and boards have far fewer choices about how their schools are run. When we look back at that point, I just want to reflect on the health indicators financially in a school district. See if this sounds familiar. We had increasing class sizes. In fact, in the fall of 2013, our class sizes exploded. They were dramatically larger. We had declining enrollment trend at that point. We lost 200 students, really quite by surprise, in the fall of '13. Our fund equity, as I said, was at its lowest point in our history that we're aware of. At that point, we were experiencing a dynamic that's common across school districts in Michigan, but it's a very unhealthy dynamic. And that is when students are choosing a way from their local public schools. When we think about programming, the one thing that we can pull students in with, at that point, we had to diminish our program in order to keep ourselves afloat physically. Our board, it had to make some really difficult decisions, like closing our middle school pools and reducing our staff. In addition, we, at that time, were in this position because school districts don't often pull out from that point. You get at a point where the downward trend starts. It's extremely difficult for school districts, particularly in Michigan, with our funding mechanism, to ever pull out of that. So I want to just thank the board for their perseverance through that chapter. And I want to reflect on what you're about to see this evening. And so today, as we present the Fall 2016 Audit, it represents really a historic turnaround, a turnaround that's rare in public schools because we have so many factors against us with state funding and federal restrictions. Our enrollment has increased over the previous three school years at about 1,000 students. If you think about that, that's the size of one and a half middle schools. That's a big enrollment turnaround. Secondly, our class sizes are dramatically reduced today over what they were in 2013. You saw the data just a couple of meetings ago. In terms of programming, those hooks that we can use to bring students in, we've been able to make tremendous progress with STEAM, with Project Lead the Way, with Early Childhood and Young Fives and Preschool Education, with Project Lead the Way, with International Baccalaureate. We've done all of that while moving ourselves out of this fiscal hole. We have continued our increase of staff compensation, and certainly that's a priority that the board has talked about a great deal. I do want to share, as we look at this audit tonight, that although we're very proud of this progress, that the progress that we see is partly represented by one-time dollars. So trustees know well, but we just want to remind our community that we don't make long-term decisions on one-time dollars. So that is one thing to note that we'll see this evening. We also want to take a moment to just express our deep gratitude to our community who have voted yes on a 2015 bond that is providing enhancement to all of our classrooms. New buses are on the road today, and that was accomplished at no additional increase in the amount of that levy. In addition, our special ed milage from last spring of 2016 is a huge benefit for children. So while we are proud of this fiscal turnaround, and we thank our staff and our students and our parent community and our courageous board, we're also always, in this business, vigilant about the money because we know our future could change in the blink of an eye. So I appreciate that we know how important it is to be prepared. I also want to remind, I know the board remembers, but remind our community that when we see the deposit to fund equity, it is a great day in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. It's very exciting. But we will also remind ourselves that a disaster like Allen Elementary, that catastrophe of the flood, and our beautiful Allen Elementary that we want to restore, that already, we know, trustees, is moving upward from $3 million to restore that building. So while we're excited with what Ms. Minnick and these great auditors are going to share with us this evening, we're also cautious because we understand that we have to be ready for catastrophes like the Allen Flood, and we have to be prepared for what those costs. So I'm so pleased to invite this great team this evening. You know, you always do tremendous work, but it's a lot more fun when the numbers look like this than it was when the numbers didn't look so great. So we thank you for your great work. We're always anxious to improve our work around fiscal responsibility. As I look at the previous years and how we were able to generate one-time money, trustees, you better believe that's what keeps me up at night, is thinking of our next opportunity for generating funds for our students. We take that responsibility very seriously. We do not want to waste one penny on behalf of our children because we know every dollar we can save and leverage is another opportunity for great students like Darius Hall, who was just with us this evening. So I thank you for your patience with that lengthy introduction, but it's my job to tell the story and your job to tell the numbers. So welcome, come on, Ms. Minnick.
Good evening, trustees. Dr. Swift, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the principal practitioners on the financial audit this year, Ms. Laura Clays and Jennifer Chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Minnick. Good evening. We are very pleased to be here tonight to present the results of the June 30, 2016 Audit. We have met with both the planning and the performance committee to go through a version of these slides, and we're happy to be here today with the final version. None of the numbers have changed, so we're pleased to report that. What we wanted to remind the community and the board, as you know, all school districts in the state of Michigan are required by law to have an audit. That audit is due to be filed with the state of Michigan no later than November 1st, and we're pleased to report that you did submit your audit on time. There were no errors in that submission. Based on our audit procedures, the test of transactions that we do, our review of your procedures and controls, we rendered an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the highest form of assurance that you can receive from an outside auditing firm, and that means that we're not aware of any changes that need to be made to the financial statements in order for them to be presented in accordance with the accounting and auditing rules that we have to follow. So congratulations to all of you on that report. We also performed an audit of your federal programs, and we're pleased to report that our testing your federal programs generated no findings and no question costs. And you have just over $9.8 million that you spend on federal programs during the year. And as you're well aware, those federal regulations become more and more stringent each and every year, and we found nothing in our auditing that would say you were not in compliance with those regulations. So congratulations. Before we get into the numbers, we thought we would talk for a minute about the financial highlights for the year. So as was mentioned in the introduction, you've had a financially successful year, and we'll be pleased to walk you through the numbers in just a few moments. And as you've experienced in the past, the variances that you have from your budgeting process continue to be very small. You have a very large budget, and the fact that you're able to monitor the budget, and we just saw the October report prior to us stepping to the podium, you are monitoring that quite closely, which keeps your variances quite small, and that's very important from a fiscal responsibility perspective. You have continued to invest in the classroom. We talked, you talked about the reduced class sizes, and we commend you for that. And then the last two items will not show up in any numerics in our slides because we'll be talking about the general fund. But we did want to say from a highlight perspective, you did invest $5.5 million for the year ended June 30, 2016 by utilizing those 2015 bond funds. And that's a huge relief from the general fund because some of those infrastructure needs and repair items that need to get taken care of, if you didn't have the support from the community from a bond issue, those would be items that you'd be prioritizing or perhaps deferring because the general fund may not be able to report that, afford them, excuse me. And as was mentioned, those bonds were supported by the taxpayers. That's required by law, but you did not have to have any increase in your tax milage in order to receive that support. So congratulations there. With those highlights, also come some challenges and some things that you need to continue to monitor. So you need to continue to monitor the balancing that you do between the additional programming that you have to attract and retain the students, and then depending and monitoring whether or not the demand for those programs are there. So the choices that you make along the way, and I know you're very diligent in doing that. Also looking at the investments that you're making in the staffing models and the services that you provide with the fact that your funding is so closely tied to the state of Michigan, which we'll talk about that in a minute, and the fact that that can change rather quickly, and needing to look at the long-term investments that may have to then be adjusted. And then, as I mentioned, your infrastructure needs continue, so you have to look at the decision between what things need to be dealt with immediately and which of those need to be deferred and/or prioritized. So things that you'll need to continue to monitor for the future. So now let's turn to the numbers. This slide that you see here is comparing your budget to actual results for the year ended June 30 for the general fund, which, as you know, is your primary operating fund. On the left-hand side, we see the comparison of your revenues. The first column there shows your approved budget that you approved in June 2015 for the June 2016 year, and that's required by state law. And you can see there that at that point in time, you adopted a budget of $206.9 million in revenues. The yellow center column was your final amended budget, which was done in May of 2016, that would have predicted $213.3 million. And then the blue column there shows what your actual revenues were, which is $215 million, and that's what is included in our audit report. I do want to highlight that at the top of each of those columns that I just pointed out, you'll see a shaded area that ranges from $12 million on the far left to $12.2 million in the blue column. That represents revenues that are included in both your budget and actual numbers that come direct from the state of Michigan under a categorical funding source called 147(c). And what that is, is the state giving each district in Michigan money for the Michigan Public School Employee Retirement System that you are then required to immediately turn around and give right back into the system, and it's contributed to the system. So what that does is it increases your revenue, and it increases your expenditures, but it does not give you any decision-making authority over those funds. On the expenditure side, we have the exact same thing happening, and I'll just focus on the actual column. So in the actual column, you had actual results of $211.4 million of expenditures. You'll see that same $12.2 million in that required contribution to the retirement system. And your actual expenditures, you'll see, were $199.2 million, and you can see that that's less than the amount of revenues that were brought in. Which brings us to our next slide. So what we have here will work from left to right. The very far-left column shows your amended budget for the June 30, 2016. So that's the final budget that you amended in May of 2016. You started the fiscal year with a fund balance of $16.7 million. You had revenue that you had budgeted of $213.3 million with expenditures of $212.9. So you were expecting revenues to exceed expenditures of $277,000. And then we had some other financing sources of $70,000. So you thought you'd have an increase in your fund balance of $347,000, leaving you with $17.1 million in fund balance. The column in the middle with the box around it, those are the actual audited results. So the fund balance that you started with, exactly the same, no change. The revenue, however, was $214.9 million. The expenditures were $211.4 million, leaving you with an excess of revenues over expenditures of $3.5 million. And your other financing sources were $1.2 million, meaning that for the year ended June 30, 2016, you added to fund balance $4.7 million. So you have a $21.5 million fund balance at the end of the year. I do want to point out two things on this slide. First, on the very far right, you will notice that the budget-to-actual variance is less than 1%, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. And that's the highlight that I talked about at the beginning. You've monitored those numbers, you know what you expect, and the results came in as expected. But let's talk about the variance for a minute. So in the second column from the right, we have the variance on the revenue side of $1.7 million. Most of that is due to timing on collection of certain receipts, as well as the fact that we have the overall excess of revenue over expenditures of $3.3 million. The primary reason for that is the sale of your interest in the library, which, that was $3 million. And that revenue came in right at the end of June 2016, after you had already adopted that final budget for the year. So that was a transaction you knew was going to occur, but it came in after that final budget amendment. Then on the other financing sources and uses line, we have a variance there of $1.1 million. We know what that is as well. That is the sale of the Roberto Clemente Center. That was $1.1 million in revenue, and that was originally budgeted for in the revenue line, but accounting rules tell us that needs to be accounted for as an other financing source. So it creates a variance, but it's something that you knew was going to occur. So overall, a very strong result for the year, but as was mentioned earlier, both of those transactions are one-time in nature. So they added to your fund balance, but they are not expected to recur. One other metric at the bottom, you'll see we put your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So the $21.5 million, if you were to divide that into your total expenditures, represents a percentage of 10.2%. If we also look at your fund balance as a percentage of revenue, and I'll tell you why that's important in a minute, it would be at 10%. And the other metric that we like to provide to school districts because your budget is so large, is if you were to look at your overall expenditure budget of $211 million and divide that out on a daily rate, the fund balance that you have of $21 million, while a very sizable number, if you did not receive any more revenue, that would only sustain operations for 37 days. So it is always important to look at where are you at and what does your fund balance This slide here shows your fund balance history, so that's the total fund balance that's accumulated since the inception of the district. And we're showing the history here from 2007 through 2016. And I want to explain what the blue line is and what the red line is. So the blue line at the top that we've inserted is if the fund balance target were to be 15% of your expenditures for the year ended June of 2016, you would need to have fund balance of about $31.9 million, which you actually had way back in 2008. But where you're at today at $21.5 million, you can see there's a bit of a gap between where you are today and that 15% fund balance target. The red line that we've drawn in there is that early warning metric that was mentioned earlier. So if we took 5% of your 2016 revenue, you would need to have fund balance sitting between $5 and $10 million, and you're certainly well above that. So what we've included in the legend at the bottom of the graph is really showing your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for each of those respective years. So as was mentioned in the opening comments, for 2013 and '14, your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was below that 5% trigger, which meant that at that point in time, you needed to provide additional budgeting information to the state of Michigan because they would have had a concern that perhaps the district was in fiscal distress, and they might need to come and have more serious conversations with you. Obviously, you've improved quite a bit from that point in time. And I did want to also point out at the bottom of this slide, we've indicated that your board policy right now is that your fund balance be in a range of 6% to 15% of expenditures. So you are headed in the right direction. You're at 10.2%. You're within the range that you're targeting, but that 15% range is one that's typically recommended by outside agencies as meaning that you'll be fiscally safe, if you will, and you're certainly a little ways away from that. The next slide here shows your change in fund balance. So if you just look at one year point in time, revenue minus expenditures, these are the historical results. So as you can see, in 2012 and '13, the district made decisions to utilize fund balance to the tune of $3.9 million and $7.2 million in those years in order to provide some stability in programming and not have to make drastic changes at that point in time. But even with that utilization of fund balance, there were very tough decisions that needed to be made. 2014, you can see improvement. You had only a reduction in fund balance of $600,000. And then for 2015 and '16, substantial adds to the fund balance based on austerity measures, based on one-time-only money, based on support from everyone involved with the district. We've talked about 2016, and just as a reminder, in 2015, when you had $7.9 million added to your fund balance, we've included a footnote there that also had sizable one-time money, both from the Washington ISD for special education funding, as well as some Medicaid funds. Those items added together was about $5 million in that year. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Jennifer Chambers to take an even deeper dive into the revenue and expenditure details.
So the graph that you're looking at is the general fund revenue, with total revenue for the year of approximately $216 million. The greatest source of revenue in the general fund is from the foundation allowance, which is shown in the blue portion of the pie, or 72%. As you're aware, there are two main components affecting the foundation allowance revenue that you receive, which is enrollment, and then the state allocation that you receive on a per pupil basis. The district can impact enrollment, and we'll take a look at the enrollment slide next in terms of what you can do and what the community is doing to attract students and increase enrollment. But the other piece of the foundation allowance is really out of your control, and that's what the state is setting as the per pupil amount that you receive. About 12% of the revenue, or shown in purple, is largely categorical funding, if it's state categoricals or federal grants, and special education funding, as well as local revenue. About 8% of the total general fund revenue that the district receives is from the county special education. We mentioned in the previous slide that there was a one-time additional funding that you received last year. So as a percentage of the whole, the amount you received this year is lower because of those one-time funds that you had last year related to that piece. About 6% of the total revenue that you receive is the Section 147(c) dollars, or that pass-through retirement funding that is required to be directly sent back to the pension system. And then in the light blue category, about 2% is related to those one-time property sales and the library sale that Laura was describing in previous slides. So considering that that's one-time funds, it represents about 2% of the district's revenue that would not be expected to recur. The next graph takes a look at the enrollment trends since 2008, 2009, and also includes the preliminary fall 2016 count for the current year that you are operating in. As you can see, and as was discussed earlier, there were some declines in the enrollment a number of years ago. Things remained relatively flat in that period of time, 2010 to 2013, and then there was the dip that Dr. Swift talked about earlier. But since 2014, the district has really experienced unprecedented growth in terms of what we are also seeing throughout the state of Michigan. Having plus 300 student increases in those years, or almost that in the '16-'17 year, is really tremendous. And to see those types of enrollment increases really just reflects the district's ability to attract students here and also to have families of Ann Arbor choose Ann Arbor schools. We switch gears now from the revenue side to taking a look at the general fund expenditures. So for the year ended 2016, the total expenditures were $211.4 million. Of that total, the largest components are the blue shaded area, which is about 77%, which is on salaries and benefits. And then if you combine that with the green section, that is the retirement pass-through funding. So essentially, 82.5%, when you look at those two combined, represents your overall salaries and benefits picture, or the cost to the district for those costs. And again, a reminder that, as we saw on the revenue side, you had the $12.2 million of revenue received for the 147(c) money. You also have that in the expenditure side being directly remitted back to the pension system. And then about 14% of the district's expenditures in the general fund is related to purchase services, which would be technology, transportation, maintenance, and custodial-type costs. The next graph takes a look at the general fund salaries and benefits piece. So it was those two pieces that added up to the 82.5% of the total expenditures. This graph takes those and breaks it out between the different salaries and benefit categories. So of the total $174 million of salaries and benefits, the largest component is in blue at 61%, representing salaries and wages. And then about 23% of the total salaries and benefits is related to retirement. And we've highlighted on that red pie piece just to show the distinction between the total amount of retirement contributions and that portion that's the $12.2 million related to the retirement pass-through. And then about 11% of the salaries and benefits is related to health insurance. Continuing to look at salaries and benefits, this graph shows the areas where the salaries and benefits costs are incurred. We wanted to point out that these categories that are presented here are the state mandated reporting requirements. There's a standardized chart of accounts that the district uses, and these are the functional categories that are defined there. So of the total $174 million in costs, the most significant area in which these costs are incurred is in the instruction and instructional support area, and approximately 7% relates to school administration. So when you combine those two, we're really looking at 95% of the total salaries and benefits for the district is going towards school-based expenditures. So that is costs that directly impact the students and student activities. So that's a large percentage of the total pie that is really directly related to the The next graph takes a look at the trend of the total MITSURS expense for the district since 2010. As a reminder, all districts in the state of Michigan that have collective bargaining agreements are required to participate in the statewide retirement system. The district has no input on contribution rates, investments for the system, but you are required to make the annual contribution based on the stated rates that the state requires. And as you can see, this cost has been steadily increasing over the past seven years. Total cost for 2016 does include that $12.2 million of the retirement pass-through, the 147(c) dollars. The overall total expense for the district in the current year was $40.4 million. And in the absence of that funding via the categorical 147(c), if that were to be eliminated, the $40.4 million would be the district's out-of-pocket costs for retirement. The next graph takes a look at health insurance costs since 2010. In recent years, the costs have been contained through board efforts, but they are still increasing slightly, and that is a trend for many organizations. We do commend the district on really trying to take hold of these costs and keep them relatively consistent over the last several years. And a fair amount of this is due to implementation of hard caps in order to separate how much employees pay versus what the district will pay up to. I just wanted to point out that this graph does just show the district's expense, does not reflect any portion of employee, their share of the expenses. I will turn it back over to Laura to summarize.
Okay. So we delved into the details a little bit on revenue and expenditures. Let's just take it back for a minute to talk about the overall year-end results. This is the same slide that we saw earlier. I'm just showing it over a shorter period of time. So again, your fund balance for the year ended June 30, 2016, in total, is at $21.5 million. And then we've included that blue and red line for the target, as well as the early warning line and where that stands currently. So what are the key takeaways for the year? As we mentioned, the success that you've experienced really
As we mentioned, the success that you've experienced really is a collaborative event amongst not only everyone who works in and for the district, but certainly all the community members that support the school district. So you're all to be commended for the year-end results. As Jennifer mentioned earlier, for the third year in a row, you've had sizable increases in your enrollment, 300-plus, and that is one of the highest numeric numbers that we see statewide. So congratulations to that, and I know that comes with a lot of work. By doing that, that generates an additional amount of revenue for the district of about $3 million per year with that additional student count for fiscal '16. And it's students that are entering the district because perhaps families have moved here and they're coming into the district. It's students that are returning to the district from the footprint of the buildings that you have, and it really is a result of the programming options that you provide to them, making sure that you're getting the word out, and just the momentum that's building because they see the great things that are happening within the district. You're also keeping an eye on the cost containment, looking for efficiencies wherever you can find them within the organization, and that's providing positive financial results as well. There are two different elements to that, of course. But as the auditor, we do have to just remind you one last time that the fund balance increase that you had this year did include $4 million of one-time-only revenue. So we don't want you to be too reliant on those year-end results as recurring all the time. Basically, you're operating in a balanced budget environment absent those one-time-only funds. So what are the things that you should continue to monitor? We've got a lot of bullet points listed on here. We've talked about a number of those in the past, but just a key highlight, we've talked about fund balance, continuing to monitor that will be very important going forward because things can change very quickly. Watching what's happening at the state level, and you'll have someone helping you watch that, and it provides a voice for you because, as you know, you're very heavily reliant upon the state of Michigan, and the changes that need to get made there for their budgeting purposes could have a direct impact on you. And then also looking at local options that might be within your control to provide support, that could provide financial support for the student population. So whether that's a special ed millage, a county-wide enhancement millage, you looking at sinking fund millage renewals or changes, or even bond issues for the future. Those are things that provide funding that you can then have control over how those dollars are invested within the district. So we'd encourage you to continue to advocate. You've done a great job of that in the past. Keep that up. Keep the fund balance going. You've already seen the monitoring of the monthly budget reports, which I think is very healthy. And that fourth bullet point is something that we included new this year for you, keeping the expenditures in control, which you do quite well, but also looking at how you're compensating people within the district in comparison to the market, whether it's your peer districts or others in the nearby communities, because you want to make sure that you're providing competitive wages throughout the district that allows you to attract the best and brightest to the Ann Arbor community. So with that, those were the comments that we had, and I believe Dr. Swift wanted to wrap things up.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your great help, and we're an organization that likes to take a look in the mirror and see how we're doing. And you coming in, and I think you spent three weeks with your team inside our building working on all of this, and then additional time, of course, back at your location. So thank you so much, Jennifer and Laura. We really appreciate your help. I want to, trustees, also acknowledge and honor Ms. Minnick. I just will remind us that since 1 October of 2015, she has completed duties not only as a CFO, but also covering the responsibilities Executive Director of Finance. We don't think much about that every day because she does those two jobs so well, but it is an inordinate responsibility. We are working on getting that position hired, but I do appreciate that she has literally done whatever it takes. I see her late at night, early in the morning, on the weekends, trying to cover both of those responsibilities. So I would just finish by thanking our Ann Arbor Public Schools employees. It's every member of the team who works hard to extend that quality so that we continue to bring students into our district and to deliver for those students an Ann Arbor Public Schools difference. Our parents have the opportunity to shop for everything in their lives, and they certainly shop when they choose their school. So we appreciate our team making that happen. Secondly, I want to thank the board. Not many people think about this because you all do the courageous work, you make the tough decisions, but I guarantee you, community, we would not be here with this audit were it not for the wise counsel and the tough decisions that this board has consistently made over years. And they make those decisions when they're good and fun, and they make those decisions when they're tough and bitter. So thank you, board members, for doing that. Thirdly, we want to thank our community because we recognize that you trust your most important, your most important people to us, and that is your children. And we take very seriously and sacred the oversight of our fiscal responsibility, and we appreciate the partnership between our Ann Arbor Public Schools and our Ann Arbor community. So thank you, and with that, Madam President.